All right, I will now call the meeting to order and Commissioner Meeks will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands by one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. May we have a roll call? Commissioner Monso?
Present.
Commissioner McElvee Day?
Here.
Commissioner Meeks?
Present.
Commissioners Donahue, Purnell, and Ramos are absent. Chairperson Gonzalez? Welcome, everyone. We'll have staff introductions now. Myroblis Administrative Aid?
I'm here, Senior Planner.
Tom Wiles, Senior Planner.
Lisa Brinton, Community Development Director.
Courtney Gressman, Planning Manager.
Thank you. We'll open it up now for public comment. Are there comments from the public regarding items that are not on today's agenda? Seeing as there are none, we will continue with approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was on February 7th, 2024. Are there any questions or comments from the Commissioners regarding the minutes from our last meeting? Commissioner Dona-- not here. Commissioner Monso?
No comments or questions.
Commissioner Meeks?
No comments or questions.
Commissioner McElvee Day?
No.
And I have no questions. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to reapprove the minutes from February 7th.
One second. Great. With a motion from Commissioner Meeks and a second from Commissioner Monso, we will have a roll call vote. Commissioner Monso?
Aye.
Commissioner McElvee Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Meeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Purnell? I'm sorry. Chairperson Gonzalez?
Aye.
Great. We'll move on now to our first public hearing regarding General Plan Amendment GPA 2023-001. And Senior Planner Thomas Wiles will give a presentation on this.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Gonzalez, Commissioners. The project is for General Plan Amendment 2023-01, Rezone 2023-01, Conditional Use Permit 2022-059, Resubdivision 2022-06, and Minor Modification to Conditional Use Permit 1977-031, or Minor Modification to 2022-019. I request to construct a 36-unit 100% affordable senior housing project located at 98 Kip Drive. The project is located at 98 Kip Drive, and it's actually-- the whole portion right now exists of the church and a vacant-- a religious assembly use and a vacant portion of the lot. The air-- the project site is located in southeast corner of Kip Drive and East Alvin Drive, and there's be this portion here. The applicant is Chispa Incorporated, and the applicant-- the property owner is Rector Wardens Investment of St. George's Parish, who are the property owners. And they-- currently, the site is zone public semi-public, and they are requesting the approval of the five following applications. This is the General Plan Amendment. The General Plan Amendment would be a request to change the general plan designation of the .85-acre portion here from public semi-public to residential height density. Rezone 2023-01 is a request to rezone the same above referenced 0.85-acre portion with 2.3-acre site from public semi-public to residential height density. Conditional Use Permit 2022-059, which is a request to construct a three-story, 36-unit, 140-- 100% affordable senior housing project with 31 off-street parking spaces, a five space, 14% parking reduction, a manager's unit, and concession requests for usable open space, density in off-street parking, and alternative means of compliance for landscaping along the east property line. Resubdivision 2022-06, which is a request for a parcel map to subdivide the 2.3-acre lot into two lots of 1.45 acres, which would be the existing residential-- religious assemblies, and a .85-acre site, which is the project for the proposed senior residential project, and minor modification to 1977-031, which is to request to delete the terms and conditions of the CUP from the proposed 0.85-acre lot. The surrounding uses are residential and school. Currently, right now, it's single-family residential, multifamily residential to south, and North Salinas High School is located to the west. The General Plan Amendment is-- proposes to change the designation, 0.85-acre portion of the 2.3-acre lot from public semi-public to residential height density. It's being requested to allow greater residential density. Under the current PS zoning, housing is allowed, but the density is to the residential medium density, which is 2.91 unit for every 2900 square feet of lot area. The proposal to change it would allow to RH 2.1, which is one unit for every 2100 square feet of lot area, which would be-- which would allow for the proposed density, you know, proposed density bonus. It's consistent with the property that is located adjacent to the south, which I believe is on 90 Kip Drive, and it's also not located in the specific plan or precise plan area. And so the general plan designation of the adjacent area to the lot, to the-- existing to the adjacent to the west would remain. The rezone would rezone the same 0.85-acre site from public semi-public to residential high density 2.1, would allow increased residential density. It's also consistent with the zoning of the property adjacent to the south. It's not located within a specific plan or precise plan area, and the zoning designation of the adjacent 1.45-acre parcel or lot would remain. The Conditional Use Permit is the request to construct the 36-unit multifamily residential project. It's 100% affordable senior housing. Includes one-- all 36 units are one-bedroom unit and includes one manager unit. There'll be 31 off-street parking spaces. Under the zoning code, 36 off-street parking spaces are required, and they are requesting a five-space 14% parking reduction. Concession requests include usable open space for density and for off-street parking, and also they are requesting alternative means of compliance for landscaping along the east property line. The related General Plan Amendment and rezone are required to allow for the proposed density of the project. This is a site that shows the layout of the proposed-- of the proposed project. The area will be located primarily on the west side of the proposed lot. It will have main access off of East Alvin Drive. There will be secondary access onto the existing religious assembly use, and there is the alternative means of compliance for landscaping to allow deviation from the minimum zoning code requirements. This is the proposal of the three-story. It's 30-- approximately 36 feet in height. It has articulation, has balconies, and it's kind of a tannish grayish color as far as the exteriors for the project. This also shows the floor plans of each-- the first, second, and third floor plans of the proposed project. The proposed concessions, the density bonus is allowed per the zoning code that would allow for the 100% density bonus. The proposed density is within the maximum allowed, and the zoning code requires a conditional use permit for the senior housing density bonus request. One of the concessions is for usable open space. They are requiring a minimum of 18,000 square feet of usable open space. They are requesting 4,900 square feet of usable open space, 3,172 square feet of common usable open space, and 1,728 square feet of private open space. They are requesting to allow for additional area of the project site to be used for your residential units, which would result in identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for affordable rents for the proposed project. They are also requesting a parking reduction and a concession. 36 off-street parking spaces are required. They're providing 31, which is requiring a five-space 14% parking reduction. They have provided data stating that similar senior projects here in the city of Salinas that Chispa has done range from around 35% to 52% for senior projects, which would be around, you know, maybe around 15 to 18 required units and parking spaces, which is within the 31 proposed. It's also covered by Assembly Bill 2097, which proposes cities from imposing a minimum off-street parking requirement on-- that is located within a half-mile radius of a major transit stop, and they are located within a half-mile of MST bus route 41, and also as per AMAG maps, it falls within the AB 2097 area. And also, for the off-street parking, there was covered by-- the concessions would allow for residential unit area and also result in identifiable-- in the identifiable and actual cost reductions for the proposed project. And the parking reduction concession complies with the zoning code requirements. They are also proposing an affordable housing plan, three very-- for three very low and 32 low-income units, the one other units for the manager, and they would be enforced for 55 years. The resubdivision would subdivide the property. It's currently 2.3 acres, and the 1.45-acre site would be for the existing religious assemblies. The 0.85-acre unit or part of the lot, excuse me, would be for the senior housing project. They are consistent-- the parcel two would be consistent with RH 2.1 standards, as well as the parcel-- parcel one, they have it on here as parcel A, but we'll call it parcel one. It would be consistent with the PS zoning district standards. Also, the minor modification would remove the CUP that was approved in 1977 from the new proposed lot, and that is the CUP back in 1977 allowed for the religious assembly use on parcel one, and the terms and conditions of the CUP would remain on parcel one, the 1.45-acre site. There has been-- environmental review was done. Initial study of mitigated declaration was routed to responsible agencies on January the 11th and routed to the State Clearing House, posted at the County Clerk's Office, routed to responsible agencies. The deadline for comments was actually from the state, from February 8th, and the final from-- was February 9th. Staff did receive comments from the Monterey Salinas Transit MST, and that they requested that the applicant provide services to-- or help to encourage-- encourage the applicant to enroll in their group discount programs, and that information was forwarded on to the applicant. The comments from the Monterey-- excuse me, Monterey Bar, excuse me, Monterey Bay, excuse me, Resources District was that the emission-- one of the main things that the emission estimates would have to comply with their standards, and they did. They do, and also that the construction would have to-- that the subsequent construction of the site would have to obtain applicable-- would have to obtain applicable permits from the MBIA to RD to comply with their regulations and standards. The recommendation is that the staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve a resolution recommending the City Council adopt the proposed mitigated declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program and approve General Plan Amendment 2023-01, Rezone 2023-01, Conditional Use Permit 2022-059, Resubdivision 2022-06, and Minor Modification 2022-019. And the site was published in the Monterey Herald on January 15th and mailed and posted on January 11th. Is there any questions of staff at this time?
Any questions to Mr. Wiles regarding this presentation? Commissioner Monso?
Yeah, I think this is really great. I had trouble finding the area. I was like, where is there space? I used to live on Block Avenue, and I was like, where? But I found it afterwards. I was like, okay, this is a little place, it's be that. I know that we alluded to it at the last meeting. You just talked about it, AB 2097, about the parking. I think that's the only issue that, you know, some neighbors may have is around the parking itself. So even if there were, I guess, issues from neighbors, and I think there's some data from Chispa, I think, around not necessarily needing parking for especially senior housing. It sounds like even if there were objections, that AB 2097 still would allow for that anyway because of, you know, trying to get affordable housing or any housing built. Can you talk about that a little bit? I don't know if it's you, Mr. Wiles, or Mr. Gressman. I know, you know, what that means for future projects.
For AB 2097?
Yeah, just--
I'm not exactly sure what to say about it. It's something that the state recently did, and on one account, it looked like it only applied to certain residential projects, but it appears to apply to every project. So we're still trying to figure it out.
Because I know that's one of the things that keep coming up to Planning Commission is a concern over parking, but obviously, we want to make sure that we get enough housing also for folks. So it's trying to find the balance between that. I don't think I have any questions. I think that was the only thing. I just wanted a clarification.
Yeah, it's kind of limited around this area, and then also, I think it's off East Market. And also, it's, you know, that private cities are imposing a minimum off-street parking requirement on residential projects located in a half-mile radius of a major transit stop.
Right, right. And thinking that, you know, seniors don't necessarily have as many cars, and they can use the bus, right? So, okay. No further questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Meeks?
I have a few questions. Did you see the nearest bus stop is a half mile away?
The-- let me see here. They're within a half mile of the stop. Let me see here. Kind of think of where-- the project site is near Route 41. And I think 40-- let me see if I can-- I don't have their route, but it's within a half mile of that stop.
When I looked on Google, there was one right across the street.
Across the street, yeah. So it runs along, yeah. Yeah, I know that's what they said.
My other question is, that seems like a significant reduction in usable open space. That's almost 75%.
Yeah, it's-- well, I think that there, you know, there's that there, you know, because seniors that wouldn't need as much usable open space, and it also helps to-- the reduction in usable open space helps provide more funding for providing for-- cutting down on the rents, reducing the rents.
And last question. Could you give me a basic idea of what cost per unit would be to the tenant?
I would probably want to defer that to the applicant as far as the cost. Because I know that-- let me see here. If the affordable housing plan-- Yeah, I'd need to probably defer that. Let's see, you know, because as part of the affordable housing plan, the 55, and they would need to work with the Housing Department with-- on the rents. But it's for-- it's-- because the very low income would be to 35-- 30 to 35-- 30% to 50% of AMI, 50 to 80% of AMI for low income. And so that'd be the rents for that when to the--
I'm not certain I still understand that, but--
Yeah.
It doesn't sound too bad.
Well, I just, I think--
I'm looking at the--
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner McElvee?
I just want to say thank you for your report, and we definitely do need more affordable housing, especially for seniors. I just had a couple of questions. I think they kind of got answered, but I was trying to figure out where the entrance would be, so it's on to Alvin.
Yeah, there's a main entrance, yeah.
So were there any studies done as far as how this-- because I am familiar with the intersection. Obviously, it went to North High, you know, but then it's just kind of in the middle there. Was there anything done to see that additional traffic going in and out of, you know, that would be new traffic?
I wasn't aware of any, you know, traffic study because the-- is-- because they do actually have a secondary access off of-- off of Kip Drive, and it does--
Especially school time. I mean, that's super busy. You'd probably avoid that at all costs. And then the other thing I was wondering is, so more than likely, we're assuming, you wouldn't need as much parking because of, you know, seniors thinking they're using different forms of transportation, but how's the street now? I know I've seen a lot of changes over there as far as off-street parking, I mean, sorry, on-street parking. Like, are there-- if they had to park on the street, is there available, or are they going to be parking way down the block? I guess that's more my visual concern.
I think there was from-- in fact, when I posted the sign, there was on-street parking on Alvin. We usually, for planning, we don't, except for a few districts, zoning districts, recommend having on-street parking or, you know, count on-street parking as a part of an off-street parking demand. They do have-- they are providing 31 off-street parking spaces, which, as per the data that they've given us, is within the maximum of similar senior projects, which is 35 to 52% of demand per unit, which would be around maybe 15 to 18 parking spaces required per unit.
Are they assigned? I mean, for example, if somebody was using two spots, does that reduce it down? Like, or do you have anything? Because you're already eliminating a few, which we're assuming.
Yeah. Well, the zoning code requires one parking space per unit, so-- and so you have the, you know, they've stated that the data that only about half the units would be used. As far as them-- as far as the applicant allocating additional parking spaces per unit, that would be something I'd need to defer to them. But under the zoning code requirement, it's one unit per-- or one space per unit, would be the requirement, so.
And then I was asking about the traffic impact because I've heard complaints over and over regarding the units that were put in on Abbott Street.
Yeah.
And then people saying like, like, it wasn't thought through of how much or what that impact would be. And so I was just concerned about, is that just not part of our process to--
Well, yeah, they do have--
--demonstrate, you know, that we've checked that and how it'll affect the in and out? I mean, I'm thinking accidents, you know?
Well, the-- actually, in the engineer's report, there's a traffic impact fee. Their total proposed trips are 252, and they would be required to pay $131,652 in traffic impact fees, and also regional development impact fee, fee assessed by TMC of $28,771.13. So they would have to pay for the development fees, for transit fees, as part of the $348,000 they're paying for development fees.
Okay, and those are all completed before the project?
Yeah, they have-- that's one of the requirements they have to have.
Okay, that was it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question about this kind of general plan amendment. Would the density increase apply to other units, or is it just for this lot?
It would just be for this. It's RM would go to RH would be 2.1, so it'd be 120-- 2100 square feet per unit, or one unit for 200 square feet of lot area.
Thank you so much. I want to open it up to comments from the public. Are there any comments regarding this target?
My name is Sharon Kelly. I live at 371 East Alvin Drive, right across that sign on the lot. And things, yeah, and things. And definitely, traffic and parking is a problem, a lot, and things, because we have people on the apartments that are on Kip already, parking on Alvin in the evenings. We have no parking at all in the evenings, and at school time, it's, you know, parents are parking to pick up their kids so they don't have to go on to Kip, you know, and stuff. They make the kids come across the street. It's easier to get in and out and things. And I'm real concerned about a driveway coming off of the lot onto Alvin, you know, right there, because the kids cross the street right there where you have put in or a new traffic light or one of those blinky lights, you know, which is really nice for the kids. Well, for anybody, but I mean, you know, for the kids to cross the street there and stuff. Yeah, that's a real concern because there-- a lot of the kids live, you know, going towards an activity that they don't go to the street light to cross and come down. You know, they cross their Alvin, you know, and pretty more traffic there is just a hazard. It really is. And things, yeah. I've been there 50 years, and the one house, you know, and stuff, so. I've seen, you know, a lot of changes and things, and senior apartments are great. I don't really have an objection to senior apartments. It's the parking and the traffic that it adds to it, you know, and stuff, yeah, and things. And I noticed on the map that is there, it has four lanes, four lanes? And they moved it down to two. You know, we have the center turning lane now, and then the two lanes and stuff, yeah.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
And my name is Yolanda, and I live at 369 East Alvin. I'm right next door to her. And the traffic with the school, I thank you, Ms. Day, for bringing that up. It's a mess. I mean, sometimes they even park in our driveway because I got cameras on when I'm at work, waiting for the kids to get out of school. And now that they made it from two lanes to one, it's even-- it's even worse, the traffic. I mean, go there when the school gets out. I mean, even go in the evening time, a lot of the people from the apartments are parked on both sides. So that's my concern, too, and it's about where the access driveway into the senior housing. But, you know, it's a good thing, don't get me wrong, but I think somebody probably needs to survey it a little more, and pretty much, that's about it.
Thank you so much. I'd like to spark up another question. It's a three-story. Is that taller than the apartments that are already there?
Do you know that? We'll bring that question to you.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, okay. Continue. Any other comments regarding this topic?
Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Jeff Morgan. I'm the president of Chispa, and I'm very excited about St. George's. I wanted to say we've built a lot of senior housing. Just to answer your question, the 30% units are roughly $600 a month, and the other units are up in the 1,300 range. So essentially, I've met with a lot of our communities. We have about 300 seniors that we serve in this community, and we have about 50 partners, and depending on who, what the needs are, we provide a lot of different services. So I encourage anyone here to come with us and visit, and I'd love to meet with you afterwards and talk a little more. And so-- but seniors in general, I've built Salinas Gateway Apartments, actually, in a prior life, so I've been doing this for about 20 years. We only had about half a space, and that's, if you look at the area, it parks pretty well. The surveys that we've done, our parking is well below the, you know, the parking is way above what we need. So if you-- even if you survey at .7, we well exceed that. And in terms of open space with seniors, what I've found is, and anyone who's worth of folks, I have folks of my own that I work with, they try to leave and come and go when there isn't traffic, and they don't usually have to have the same hours as the families do. And so-- and over time, people lose their dependence on those vehicles because frankly, it's a quality of life issue. If you're depending on SSI and you realize that you're in a safe, stable place, that gives them the opportunity to use those funds for food, for medication, for all the other things that they need. So on behalf of all the future residents that we have, I want to commit that we're going to be good neighbors, and we'll make sure of that. And so, and, you know, Dana, I want to thank her for doing the perseverance, and we've been at it for a couple of years now, and also for Paul Davis, who we've worked with for a long time. And I'm open for any other questions. Thank you so much.
Any other comments on this project?
Any other comments on this project?
I'll give you a little history. St. George's Church was moved there to that block. It was on the corner of Sanborn and John Street. You remember John? It was there. But I know we have Chispa homes out in our area. I know they're well taken care of. I know they're well taken care of. I know they're gated. And as far as, because we have them off between Freedom and Veranda, and I haven't really heard any complaints of the seniors that live in those homes. And I know I've had friends live in them, and I, at the time when they were built, I even went into them. But they, we haven't had any problems out there that I've been aware of, or anyone related to me, because if there is, I mean, I get phone calls, I really do. And so, I just want to say, they are, all the other apartment places take care of the ones of the Chispa, we'd be, you know, be all right. Because they're not allowed to wash their cars, or work on their cars, or anything like that around there. And KIP is a dead-end street. So just so you know that, just kids walk through there to high school, but that's other, another thing.
Thank you for your.
Thank you for your comments.
Quick, Clement. Mary, thank you. I often wondered what happened to that church.
All right. Are there any additional questions from the commissioners regarding this project? Commissioner Mansell.
Mr. Wales, are you able to answer that question about the height in comparison to the apartment complexes?
Talking about these?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know their height, but they are two-story, so they, and the ones proposed are three-story, so they probably are taller. Their proposed 36 height, so 36 feet, excuse me, which is less than the maximum allowed, 45 feet. And they're also outside of what we call 45-degree visibility triangle from the properties located to the east. And so they, the maximum allowed height is...
So all of the apartments are bordering, well, the new apartments will be built on the backside of these apartments, is that what?
It would be actually, the proposal, let me see if I can get this side. They would be built on the, on this side here. They would be built along, kind of, vertical with the...
Pushed back.
Pushed back. So you're, you're right over here, so you'd be in the, on the side here. So this is, it's along the, it's more of a...
The blue, the blue area?
Orientated north to south is the main one. But this is the, the street front here.
Tom, perhaps could you show an aerial photograph?
What's that?
On an aerial photograph, can you maybe show the location?
Yeah, the apartment, this is, yeah, Alvin, it would be this area here.
Okay.
So this is where it's going to be located.
So they're going to be, in houses, reminiscing apartments?
Good. So the main one actually would be here, and then parking is going to be over here in this area.
Okay.
Yeah, awesome. So this is, the apartments will be here, and then parking in...
On that side there, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was my only question, because it does seem like the back, it's the backyard of the church, right? Like, the back end. But no further questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Meeks?
Yes, but I forgot what it was. Never mind.
We'll come back to you. Commissioner McKelvey Day. I don't know at what point, or, you know, what department handles this, but just a recommendation, I think maybe if they do a right turn only coming out, you've got a lot going on right there. I don't have any more questions. I, I just had one question regarding the neighbors' concern about the driveway. Would it be on KIP, or would it be on Alvin?
The main one is off of Alvin, because that's primarily, the lot is orientated, but it also has a secondary access off, they're going to have to have a, one of the requirements of CUP is to have a reciprocal access parking and driveway agreement with the proposed new lot, the 1.45 acre lot, off of, so it'd be also secondary access off of KIP. The main would be off of these Alvin, but it would be off of, KIP would be the, be a secondary.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Did you remember yours?
I just had a comment. I don't, the parking's not going to be a problem, I was just concerned about the traffic. And if you have that access on the backside of that lot, since you're going to be running perpendicular to the other apartments, they don't have to come off on Alvin, they can come off on KIP. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would any commissioners like to make a motion?
I'm going to give it a try. I'll, I'll move to approve a resolution recommending that the city council, from the findings, adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program. Approve general plan amendment 2023-001, rezone 2023-001, conditional use permit 2022-059, re-subdivision 2022-006, and minor modification to conditional use permit 1977-031.
Nicely done. Do we have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. So with a motion from Commissioner Mansell and a second from Commissioner Meeks, the Planning Commission's action on this item is a recommendation to the city council in support of this amendment and conditional use permit and minor modification to construct a 36-unit, 100% affordable senior housing project located at 98 KIP Drive.
I think we need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a motion, and there is a second, and so now we will have a roll call vote. Getting ahead of myself.
We got too excited. Commissioner Mansell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKelvey Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Meeks?
Yes.
Chairperson Gonzalez?
Obviously, yes. Now, the Planning Commission's action on this item is a recommendation to the city council in support of the amendment, the conditional use permit, the minor modification to conditional use permit 1977-031, to construct a 36-unit, 100% affordable senior housing project located at 98 KIP Drive. The staff will schedule this matter for the city council's consideration, at which time a final decision will be made. I just want to thank everyone who came out and offered their comments, and thank you to Chispa and the owners of the site for your work on this, and to the staff. Thank you. All right. We will move on to our next hearing. Focused on conditional use permit 2021-019, and Adam Garrett, Assistant Planner, will present a PowerPoint for this project.
Hi, everyone. My name is Adam Garrett. I'm an assistant planner here with the current planning division. Hello, commissioners. Nice meeting some of you. Good seeing you again. So, yeah, this is, the proposed project is conditional use permit 2021-19, and it's a request to construct a 1,288-square-foot, two-story detached, single-family dwelling unit with a 400-square-foot attached two-car garage and an exterior staircase on a vacant 4,220-square-foot corner lot. So, yeah, background, that's a snapshot of the site. The red house is actually on the abutting lot to the south, so it's a corner lot, and as you can see, it's curved. Jose Luis Mendoza and Daphne Breitler are the applicants, as well as the property owners, and they do own the property, the abutting property as well. They applied for CUP, the CUP, for residential design review on June 8th, 2021. So, single-family dwellings in this part of the city, and most parts of the city, are subject to infill regulations, zoning code section 37-50.110. So that's why the residential design review process is required to consider privacy, domination of the structures, and making sure that they fit into the neighborhood well. So it's a 4,220-square-foot vacant corner lot, it's a smaller lot. So the applicants are proposing, like I mentioned, a two-story, 1,288-square-foot single-family dwelling. I think there's an extra colon there. So it's three-bedroom, 2.5 baths, 400-square-foot attached garage, and it has an exterior staircase leading to the primary bedroom on the second floor. It has an 80-square-foot front porch. It's also somewhat adjacent to Santa Rita Creek, which is directly south of that red house that you see on that slide. And our code requires a biological resources study to be conducted in that case, so that was conducted on June 16th, 2022, and there are certain conditions in place that are required for this project, just because of its proximity to Santa Rita Creek, and the specimens, plant, and animals that live there. So just like a little overview of the infill development regulations for the residential low-density district. So the purpose of the infill development regulations are listed there, so preserve existing residential patterns and development, and reinforce the character of the neighborhood. It's compatible in scale and height with the neighboring single-family dwellings, so similar proportions, level of detail, scale of the new proposal, reflect some of the best characteristics of the adjacent dwelling unit. So that's kind of the premise of this, this chapter of the zoning code. Front and corner side yards, there are some considerations there based on the neighboring block face, which I'll talk about on the next slide. So in this case, the minimum required corner side yard and front yard setback is 19 feet 6 inches. So it's a little different than the base zoning district regulations. Height, scale, and roof pitch, and privacy need to be considered with infill development. The Planning Commission may authorize a modification to the standards per zoning code section So neighboring block face, I did mention that, so there's a lot of, a lot depends on that in this zoning code section. So I have provided a photo, as you can see, it's a corner lot, there's a house next to it, and then you have Santa Rita Creek, you have a school to the south of that, Santa Rita Elementary, and you also have a large open space area to the east of the property. So the neighboring block face is single-family dwelling units within 150 feet of the nearest property line of the site. So you can see those little red dots, but it also includes, if there's no developed parcel within 150 feet, you skip down to the next parcel. So in that case, you go all the way down to that little red dot on the bottom portion of the page. So that's kind of how we actually developed the 19-foot, 6-inch setback requirement, so that's based on the neighboring block face. So the minimum required is, for the corner side yard setback, sorry, is 19 feet 6 inches. The proposed minimum corner side yard setback is 15 feet on this project. So it extends actually to 20 feet. Another portion of the corner side yard setback is 20 feet, which is actually compliant, because it's a curved lot, so it is a tricky lot. So one of the portions of the resolution is actually to approve a modification of the standards to the required 20-foot setback, and allow the 15-foot minimum corner side yard setback, which is, actually, it is compliant with the base zoning district regulations, RL 5.5. So if it was like a new subdivision, it would be compliant, it's just since it's an infill development, it does require the different setback. So that's one of the things we're asking for, and the, is the modification to the standards for that setback. The six-foot, the, actually, this interior side yard setback is required to be a little bit lengthier as well, just due to the height of the project, so it's an additional 1 foot 9 inches in addition to 5 feet, so 6 foot 9 inches. It would be your interior side yard setback, and you can kind of see that graphic, it's going to be about 7 feet from the south property line. The maximum allowed, some, a couple other stats of this project, the maximum allowed dwelling unit size is 2,500 square feet in this lot, based on those standards, and the proposed is 1,288 square feet, square feet, sorry. The maximum height is 30 feet, the proposed dwelling is 23 feet 6 inches. So the perceived scale is minimized, so the dwelling is stepped back from Santa Rita Street. And there's also a smaller second-story component, and I'll show you that on the next slide. There's a large front porch, you can kind of see it on that graphic right there. It's actually not the best representation of how the, the house is stepped back, but I'll show you on the elevations slide. To comply with privacy requirements, so the windows facing, the bedroom windows facing the abutting dwelling unit are required to be frosted on the bottom 2/3 of the window, and that's something that is actually written in the code, so frosted, frosted or louvered windows in the case of privacy issues. So usable open space required on the corner lot is 650 square feet, which is less than the, a regular lot, which would be 1,000 square feet. In this case, they're providing 665 square feet of usable open space. And I'll show you some of that in the site plan. So the site plan, you could see the usable open space in the dark gray, you could see the outline of the house, that's kind of that crisscross pattern. You could see the driveway on the far right, I think there's a laser pointer here. Oh, yeah, right. There's the driveway. So that corner side yard setback that I was talking about, so your, your front yard's right here. This is a 30-foot setback, so it complies, because it's more than 19 feet 6 inches. This is where you have the 15-foot corner side yard setback, which is less than the required minimum of 19 feet 6 inches. Here, it's actually about 20 feet, and here, it's even more than 20 feet. So it complies on part of it, but the portion over here doesn't quite comply, so that's why we're asking for that modification. This is Boulevard Street right here, and this is Santa Rita Street. These are the floor plans for the house, so you see a two-car attached garage down here, 400 square feet. You have a living room, kitchen, dining room, half-bath, laundry room, downstairs. Upstairs, you have a primary bedroom, two other bedrooms, a game room, and another bathroom. The elevations, so this is the front yard, actually, is right here. This is the corner side yard view, which is actually where the front entrance is. You could see that the dwelling is stepped back on the second floor, and it has a smaller component. It also has a large porch to minimize the verticality of the structure. You also have that exterior staircase that I referenced earlier, and these three windows at the top, 1, 2, 3, those are required to be frosted on the bottom 2/3 of the window due to privacy concerns for the backyard of the abutting dwelling unit. So the recommendation is to, I thought there was another slide, approve a resolution finding, CUP 2021-19 exempt from CEQA pursuant to section 15303, which is new construction or conversion of a small structure, and approve CUP 2021-19 with a modification of standards to the minimum required corner side yard setback from 19 feet 6 inches to 15 feet. And, yeah, we did some noticing, it was a very windy day, so I couldn't take a picture of the notice, it was like flying backward, but Harold on the 10th, and we did the other postings, as shown above. So that's about it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from the commissioners to Mr. Garrett regarding this presentation? Commissioner Mansell?
Thank you so much. I actually had a question about the notification. So for this particular property, notifications weren't made to the neighbors, it was just in public?
Oh, there was a mailing as well. I think I, oh, mailed, yeah, the notice was mailed on the 8th of February.
Okay. Oh, so it's part of the second bullet point?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure, because I think, I know that that's some of the concern, to make sure that if there's going to be any changes in the neighborhood. I don't think I have any big questions. I think when I first read, I was trying to figure out the positioning to understand the setback, but I see the street is kind of curved in a weird way, which kind of, that's what sets it up to have a different setback. So no, no questions.
Commissioner Meeks?
One question, is this above the flood plain, or has Santa Rita Creek ever flooded this area?
You know, I believe it is. Engineering did review the project. I think we have a flood map, and I'm not sure if it's within that zone, to tell you the truth, but I believe that engineering would have verified that during their review.
Okay. My only concern was, it's kind of far back from Santa Rita Creek, they get the front house first. the front house first, before that, but as long as they keep it cleaned out. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Commissioner McKelvey Day? No questions. And I have no questions. We'll open it up now for public comment, are there any comments from the public regarding All right, any other questions or comments from the commissioners regarding this project? Would any commissioners like to make a motion? And just a reminder, this, this would not go to council, we have the ability to make this decision.
It would only go to council if appealed.
If appealed, okay.
And just want to make one thing crystal clear, this would have been a staff-level CUP, if it were not for the modification of standards with regard to the setbacks.
Thank you for that clarification.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so with a motion from Commissioner McKelvey Day, and a second from Commissioner Meeks, could we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Mansell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKelvey Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Meeks?
Yes.
Chair Percy Gonzalez?
Yes. All right, so, the planning commission has just approved the request for a conditional use permit, which cannot be issued for 10 days. During this 10-day period, any person having standing to do so under the law, who is aggrieved by this action or decision, may file an appeal with the community development department located at 65 West Aliceall Street. And just to say aloud, this is with regards to conditional use permit 2021-019, which is a request to construct a 1,288 square foot, two-story detached, single-family dwelling with a two-car garage, at 202 East Bolivar Street, in the residential low-density zoning district there. Thank you, and congratulations. All right, moving on now to other business, general plan steering committee update. I know I do not have any updates, I have not been to any meetings. Has anyone else? Lisa, do you have any updates on the general plan steering committee?
No, at this time, staff will be coming to the city council on March 4th, for the update, in terms of traffic, transportation, coverage of the burn of the first, as well as outreach regarding changes, and we will continue to update, so I believe it will be later in this week, maybe through a seminar, or...
Thank you. Looks like there are no follow-up reports?
Correct, I have none.
Any future agenda items?
Got a couple of those, we're still trying to hit the lineup, so I'm not sure if I'm ready to go completely public with them just yet, no notices are out yet.
Okay, great, and so just in case, we may have a meeting March 6th, who will be able to attend by show of hands? No? Okay, so we may or may not have quorum, we'll double check on that.
Actually, I do have one follow-up item, there have been requests to move the meeting to 4:00 PM, we're still looking into it, there's actually quite a few changes we'd have to make, there's the forecasting of all the, the meetings for the rest of the year, we have some computer templates and formats and notices, so we have to be careful that we don't overstep one of our notices that says 3:30, for instance, so we're still looking into it, and I apologize, it's taking a little bit longer than anticipated, but there are some, some moving parts to this that we have to get right.
We appreciate staff looking into it, thank you.
And is there any progress or any information about the publication of meetings to the general public?
So I did share your concern regarding the February 1st transportation meeting, and that was, the outreach was led by consultants, supported by staff, so it is acknowledged that we do much more than just post in the newspaper, we do typically canvas, put on social media, as well as email blasts, and the traditional forms of putting in the newspaper. So we can always do a better job, there's always opportunity for improvement with outreach, but I did share the concern and confirm that it wasn't a city-led, staff-led outreach effort, but that we would communicate those concerns to the consultant as well.
Has anybody ever brought up to the city council again, why the Herald and I'm a
Our, I, I think we are required to establish a newspaper of record, and it used to be the Californian, and I think it shifted due to the frequency in which the Californian is published, it's shifted more to an online publication, so that is when we, my understanding, when we went to the Herald. So I think it's also frequency, it's not just the local paper, but what is the frequency of publication?
What about community calendar?
I may have forgotten something, but with question...
So many different agencies use the community calendar on KSPW to announce these kind of things, don't you?
Oh, that is definitely a resource we could look into tapping into, thank you.
Thank you, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.